Westboro TV, are you ready?
We are good to go.
Okay, I'll give you a quiet few seconds and then I'll get started. Okay, good evening, everybody. It being a minute past 6:00 PM on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, I call this meeting of the Westboro Board of Selectmen to order. This meeting is being conducted remotely. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Westboro Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so via Westboro TV's online platforms, including youtube.com/WestboroTV and/or westbrotv.org. It's also available via the cable channels, 192 on the Charter system and Channel 28 on Verizon FiOS. No in-person attendance and members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town of Westboro's website an audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive records of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So I want to welcome everyone here this evening. Normally for these meetings, we walk through all of the open board and committee appointments to help keep us on time and moving forward. Rather than read through those, I'll invite people. You can look at the agenda as for this meeting is posted on the website or there's a place on the website where you can see all of the open board and committee positions. Feel free to check the website, find an area that interests you, and we welcome you to step forward and volunteer for the many volunteer positions, board and committee memberships that help make our town run smoothly and effectively. So given that, it is 6:03 and next item on the agenda is our open forum. And I don't believe we have anyone here this evening for open forum. Welcome, Shelby. And so we will move to our next item, item three, which is the Town Manager's Report. And so Kristi, take it away.
Thank you. An update for our vaccine clinic. The Metro West, Westboro Vaccine Clinic has vaccinated over 1,500 people each of the first three weeks of the clinic. And in the fourth week, about 900 people. And all clinics throughout the state have seen a drop in appointments. We did hold the clinic on Saturday, May 8th, for 16 to 18-year-olds and delivered 689 doses. Westboro has had over 71% of the total population receive at least one dose as of May 6. As the board is aware, we received a Public Health Shared Services grant. So Westboro, along with Boilston, Northboro and Southboro have been awarded this grant. And this is consistent with the staffing study where we were looking for regional opportunities specific to public health nursing. And that's one piece of the grant, as is inspection software and tablets for restaurant and housing inspections. We did appoint a Board of Health member. The Board of Health interviewed two candidates for that position on April 20th. It's the Town Manager appointment. So Kim did sit in for me because I was on vacation and then I did watch the interviews. And so the Board of Health did recommend Dr. Melissa Marr, who's been appointed to the Board of Health. And we also want to thank Dr. Anandada for his interest in the position. So we have sent him an email letting him know of all the other open positions that we'd love to see him apply for. The Off Oak Street property last year at town meeting, the town voted to authorize the Board of Selectmen to file legislation to allow the state to transfer the proper, a small piece of property behind the DPW. That piece of legislation did pass, and so we have until the end of this calendar year to complete that transaction. So we're working with town council. As you'll remember, it was for a nominal fee. I think we had appropriated about $5,000 for that transaction. The Eversource has sent us information about a hardship assistance fund. So we want to make sure that people are programmed. So we want to make sure people are aware of it. We posted it on social media. We'll get it up on our website. And then this also, the Town Manager Report has attachments to it in both English and Spanish. But it's for people who are having trouble paying their bills or maybe behind in their bills for Eversource. So participation in the assistance program or payment plan will prevent service disconnection when they resume after July 1st. So you want to make sure that if you have that need, that you get more information about the program. So we've sent off to some of our other departments who might have more contact with people who might have that need. In vacant positions, we have the Public Health Director search. So we have two candidates that we have forwarded on to Board of Health for their consideration. And so they'll hold a public meeting to interview those two candidates and to select one. Conservation Director, we've been working through the job descriptions. And so we hope to post that later this week. The report is long this week, so I'll skip through it and then encourage people to read it on the website. As I said, Conservation Department, Jordan, has left the town of Westboro. And so we do have Sherri Wittes in the interim role. On Saturday, May 1st, we had a successful dedication for this Wicker Farm Conservation Area. And then the Conservation Department's working with the Eagles out to create wooden signs for the entrance to the property. They've also had six hearings in front of the interim director. It's prepared to close out four of them. Community Development, Starbucks has officially opened at 139 Turnpike Road for the past last week. Zach Bodnar, who's our EDC Coordinator, is working with Hagerty Group through Grant Program, the local rapid recovery program, which the board's heard about previously, to come up with initiatives to help downtown businesses help recover from COVID-19. 97 Turnpike Road, which is the old FIBA building, has a new business moving in soon, Monroe Tractor, a family-owned business sells and services heavy equipment. DPW, the Water Division completed their annual dead-end hydrant flushing in April. Thanks to Josh Van Houten, Brian Kane and the entire Water Division, they implemented some new techniques that resulted in over 25% reduction in the amount of water used and was less disruptive to residents. The annual rain barrel drive is complete, so 17 barrels were purchased by residents. Despite the recent wet weather, the Central Mass Region is in a Level 1 mild drought status as determined by the Mass Drought Management Task Force. And so they expect to implement the water restrictions. And then the annual paving program and preservation is posted to the DPW website. I hope you've also noticed that we've been posting a lot of things on Facebook as well. So all the departments, per the communication plan, have appointed people to have access to this town's Facebook page. And so I think we've been good about keeping that active. In the Police Department, they're looking to apply to be part of the ABLE Project, which is the active bystandership for law enforcement. This is a program that's been developed by Georgetown Innovative Policing Program. And so they'll participate in the program. The program has an aim of creating a police culture in which officers routinely intervene as necessary to prevent misconduct, police mistakes and promote officer health and wellness. And then the Board of Health has given a long update, update similar about the vaccine clinic. They're also working on bringing Dr. Marr on board. We talked to them about the mosquito spraying. The Board voted to make the Conservation Director and Assistant Physicians agents of the Board of Health in all issues that concern flood zones, which is also consistent with our staffing study. That was one of the recommendations of the staffing study. And then they continue to work with the AG's Office on the Abandoned Property Initiative. So like I said, it's a long, it's a long report. We also have more information about the Eversource program and there's a whole PowerPoint attached related to statistics for our vaccination site. Thank you.
Wow, a lot going on. Thank you. Okay. Members of the Board, if any questions about anything, please send a note to Kristi. Item four on the agenda this evening is a request to close streets and put up signs for high school graduation parade. And are Maureen or Amy or Roberta Brown joining us?
Sila?
I'm sorry, someone just came to the counter. I did send the link over to the folks that we were expecting to appear. So I'm not sure where they are.
We're a little early, so I don't know.
Okay, we can, we can come back to that item then. Because Patrick Tracy is here with us.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Okay, and so this is item five on the agenda. Veterans Advisory Board requests to place signs on the Rotary. And so let me just pull up my notes on this. And so as noted in the packet, at our prior meeting, we approved the Veterans Advisory Board placing flags on the Rotary with a schedule this spring, the summer and this fall around veterans holidays and the Fourth of July. The request did not include a request for signage on the Rotary. But since the Veterans Advisory Board has placed signs in the past, the Board of Select made it clear that the signs are not allowed per the town policy, that last year's decision to do that was an exception specifically related to COVID. The Veterans Advisory Board requested that they be on this agenda to appeal that decision and discuss it. And so in our packets, we have lengthy email detail. I shouldn't say lengthy, it's really detailed, email points from John Gallinow and from the Veterans Advisory Board. And Kristi had also provided an email to them that offered multiple alternatives, including the banner on the posts across West Main Street in front of Town Hall, on the cemetery fence on West Main Street, and potentially on the light posts using the small banners as well. And so Mr. Tracy's here. So typically, we would do this and have him speak during open forum, but this is an active request for an item on our agenda. I will give Mr. Tracy the floor to make a statement for a couple of minutes and then the Board can discuss and deliberate. So, Mr. Tracy, you have the floor.
All right, good evening, everyone, and thank you very much for your time. Just as way of background, I'll try and be brief here. But I am co-chair of the Westboro Veterans Advisory Board, and I'm appearing this evening on behalf of the Board to request reconsideration and reevaluation of the recent decision to restrict the signage, which is veteran signage that's placed in conjunction with the American flags on the Rotary. And just to note, the signage and the flags have, one, been past practice of the Board and the town for a number of years. And as Mr. Edinburgh pointed out, that is done in conjunction with federal holidays, Memorial Day, July 4th, Veterans Day. I believe that everyone probably received my correspondence dated May 6th, which kind of outlines the position of the Board and some of the issues that we'd like to have addressed. But just to be brief and as a refresher, just to kind of put it into a refresher. So again, the signage is non-political. Obviously, we're a board sponsored by the town. We're not a part of any political movements. We're not a private organization. We're a town-sponsored board. I think that's important to note. The signage and the flags placed together are extremely important to the Board, to the veteran community, as well as to the community at large. It's a visual recognition of the service and sacrifice, not only that veterans have given, but also their families. So by just having the flags there without the signage, it doesn't have the same visual impact or the same meaning. And I think just generally speaking, the signage and the flags placed together really generate positive feedback for the community. It generates positive feedback for the town and it certainly generates positive publicity about some of the different issues that face veterans and their families. And being that it's really the center of town, it's the best place for that type of signage in conjunction with the placement of the flag. Importantly too, because that's such a high-traffic area, you know, this is an opportunity for us to use it as a teaching mechanism for our youth, for our kids, so they can recognize the veterans in our community and in our country and what they've done and what that means to the town and to the country overall. So again, I think that the community and the veterans within the town support this overwhelmingly. We find the decision, quite frankly, somewhat disappointing. I think that the signage in no way impedes traffic whatsoever. It's not an obstruction or anything of that nature. Again, it's been past practice of the town. And again, these signs and the flags are placed during times of federal holidays, Memorial Day, July 4th, Veterans Day. These are all very important national holidays for our active-duty troops, for those that have retired or just veterans and their families as a whole. So with that in mind, and again, you can use my correspondence from May 6th as a reference point, obviously, it's much more detailed. But the Board would respectfully request and really encourages the Board to reconsider and reevaluate its decision. As, as part of that reevaluation, we're requesting the town to allow the Veterans Board to place the signage on the Rotary during those respective times, along with the American flag placements. So just to wrap things up, I'm happy to address any questions. And if no questions this evening, you can feel free to email me or John Gallinow. But I really do appreciate you hearing us out and appreciate your consideration.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up to discussion to the Board. Shelby?
Thank you, Alan, and thank you, Tracy, for coming before the Board. So, you know, the town has, has been shared with the Veterans Advisory Board, a policy that's been in existence since 1991 that is, it's very short. It's a short, probably the shortest policy we have. But it specifically says that, it clearly defines the purpose of the Rotary as it relates to signs. And it specifically says, "Signs on the Rotary are to be limited to notices for town meeting, Election Day and water conservation bans." And, you know, that is the policy. So this came up last year. And at that time, when I was on the Board at that time, when it came up, the signs were already placed with the flags. And so the Board at that time said, you know, it has been past practice. It has been allowed, we'll just sort of let it go, but we have to address it, you know, going forward. So in my mind, it's always been we either address the policy and fix the policy and create, you know, a new policy, which we haven't done, or we allow for an exception, or we stand by the policy as it is. So I do believe that the flags in and of themselves are a beautiful tribute to our veterans and that they themselves could stand alone. But again, that's not my decision. The Veterans Advisory Board does a beautiful display. So I in no way want to critique that. I do think that our Town Manager has offered a number of different locations where banners, plural, could be, could be displayed that aren't just located, you know, right in the downtown area. They include the digital billboards and others that Alan has already shared here. So we won't repeat them. I think the flags and the signs collectively certainly give us all an opportunity to honor our veterans and address many of the points made by Mr. Tracy. But I'm going to go back to sort of my first point, which is, we have a policy and unfortunately, we haven't, as a Board and prior Boards, adhered to that policy. And so I think it's important that we, when we start making exceptions to policy, I think we invite unwanted challenges. And I think that if the, if there were no alternatives being offered that were, again, in my opinion, very visible, very prominent, that I might feel differently and might be more inclined to make an exception. But I support the Board's prior decision in our previous meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. If you don't, if possible, if I could just respond to that before we get into further dialogue, I'll again, keep it short. I would submit that if the policy was in effect as of 1991, it again, has been arbitrarily enforced. And certainly, if we consider past practice, the Veterans Board has always been allowed to install the signs along with the flags. The alternative accommodations to the signage is not sufficient because it doesn't carry the same visual weight and recognition that the two combined hold together. So if the Board is going to deny the request, then we would like, as part of the Veterans Board, to request an exception. And if that is not sufficient, we would request a revision to the town policy because quite frankly, that policy is quite sparse and bare bones. And I think there could be room for better verbiage and more allowance for things of this nature. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ian?
Thank you. Mr. Tracy, you just hit on some of the things I was going to say. I think that, as I think back, I think, I think that as a Board, yes, we have a longstanding policy, but I think our enforcement of it, our Board and past Boards, has not been, has been arbitrary, I guess is the word. I think back to not just what we're talking about here and past practice of allowing for this. I think back to last year for our senior class that we allowed, I think it was three signs around the Rotary that were congratulating seniors, et cetera. And we made exceptions there, they didn't fit the policy. We also did another, the Poppies on the Little Island there as well with the sign along with that. I do agree with Mr. Tracy, I think, while we've offered alternatives, putting the sign away from the flags doesn't have the effect or impact that people may not tie the two together. They should, but they may not. And I think some of the points that were there. So my thoughts here is that we basically, my motion here is that we grant an exception, allowing for the signs to be placed this year. But that we also, as a Board, revisit our policy because I do think that it is limited. And when I think about what is in that policy, those are things that we have been putting on the orange DPW electronic signboard versus actually putting signs themselves on the Rotary. So I think it is a good opportunity for us to revisit and relook at that policy. I think the, I had one final thought here, but of course, it slipped my mind. But anyways, I think that's, you know, my standing. Oh, the other piece that I wanted to hit, and I think the Town Manager had called this out, is that, you know, once again, this year is a year of exceptions. Unfortunately, as we know, we're not able to have our traditional Memorial Day parade where we would parade through and see residents around the Rotary and going by that. So again, I think things are, things are in place. We have past precedent. I would be in favor of granting the exception and as a Board, making the policy up at a future meeting to revisit that policy and see about amending it.
Okay, thank you, Ian. Patrick or Sean, any comments?
I mean, I'll just make one quickly. I think, I think you said the policy initially was created in 1991. So it's a 30-year-old policy that apparently, I guess, over the course of those 30 years hasn't been enforced in certain situations. I'm curious as to, I guess, what the genesis of the policy was back in 1991. Like what inspired it? Was it something related to the insurance of the town? Or what it was that caused us to create this policy? I definitely think it's worth revisiting. Anything that's 30 years old probably should be revisited. And I would be okay with an exception, you know, prior to us revisiting that policy as well.
Okay, thank you. Patrick?
Yeah, I guess my only comments on this are, as a son of a veteran and having watched my dad walk in the Memorial Day Parade 30 years ago. You know, it's unfortunate that we can't do that this year. And at this point, I certainly would also grant an exception. I think it's important that we show and recognize our veteran community in these times because they're not going to get the recognition by other means that we're normally traditionally used to. So I would support that motion, Ian.
Okay. I guess, I definitely see both sides of this discussion, right? That there is a policy in place. I wouldn't say enforcement's been arbitrary. I would say that we've been open to exceptions in the past. And I've also seen that, you know, even though in the past, when exceptions have been granted and us explicitly stating that it's one time and not setting a precedent, that that part of the discussion gets lost. And so we start, we start seeing requests from other organizations to, you know, plant signs on the Rotary at different times. And the problem, you know, it's sort of, you know, realistically, at some point, if we let some, we need to let all. And then we run into logistics, we run into, you know, signs that could be a traffic hazard. We run into freedom of speech issues and potential organizations that we'd rather not be using that space for public signage. You know, certainly even, you know, within the confines of the current policy with political candidates and protests or, you know, people advocating for various causes, you know, using the Rotary, we see, you know, near misses and other issues around the Rotary and so managing that. I, you know, I guess, sort of listening to the conversation this evening, I've shifted a little bit and that I'm comfortable with an extension, you know, an exception for this year and a review of, you know, of the policy and the option. I would, you know, I would argue that a banner that, in front of Town Hall that refers to flags on the Rotary and our support for veterans, that same type of messaging on the digital sign at Lyman Street in East Maine and on the two electronic billboards on Route 9, actually can tie that message to the fact that the flags on the Rotaries and even include pictures on the digital signage boards on Route 9 of the flags on the Rotary. And that actually reaches a broader audience and gives more visibility to the cause of veterans and the town's support of veterans. So I guess I'm saying, I'm sort of, I'm comfortable with a one-time exception while we, so we can review the policy in more detail. But I would say that the other options should not be considered mutually exclusive. And I would ask that the Veterans Advisory Board, you know, step back and consider the broader visibility and the broader awareness that comes from, you know, leveraging the range of places where we could post a message. And so with that, Patrick? And then if someone wants to make a motion?
Yeah, I guess, Alan, I understand the concerns of opening up Pandora's Box here a little bit, right? But the fact is that this is a community, you know, the veterans, we have memorials on public property throughout town to our veterans, right? A World War II memorial, Vietnam War memorial, et cetera, in front of Forbes Building. There's already precedence set. This is also an organization that is, as mentioned previously, is also part of the town. So it's a little different scenario. So I hope that when we do reopen that policy, that we allow an exception for this particular situation. This isn't, this isn't some club or political movement party. This is in recognition of people who have given their lives to our, to our country. So it's a very different situation that I think needs to be, hopefully, long-term an exception or incorporated into that policy.
I think you recognized me by your amuse.
Yep, Shelby, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. So I want to reiterate that I don't disagree with the comments made by my fellow board members. And I think that there's no greater individual that we can honor than those who have sacrificed or their families to Mr. Tracy's point. So I think that making sure that our policy forward-looking recognizes that is critically important. It needs to be a priority for this board. I do respectfully disagree with my fellow board members in that I think when you make an exception for one, even though it's a town department, they're a town committee, if you will, board, there could be others that come forward with a request that this board will be challenged to apply, you know, sort of the same or similar, I should say, logic to. And I just, I think that, given that there are alternatives, as I've already stated, I respectfully disagree with Mr. Tracy, that, you know, it's not like we're saying there's no other opportunity to kind of publicize and give credit, certainly where credit is due, and to honor the veterans. So appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on the discussion. Thanks for recognizing me a second time, Alan.
Thank you. Is there a formal motion?
Yeah, Alan, I have a move to allow the Veterans Advisory Board to place signs on the rotary consistent with the dates the flags are placed on the rotary. And I guess, as part of the motion, I'd like to say that, and then have the board place on a future agenda, a review, a potential update of the sign policy.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any additional discussion? Okay, seeing, hearing none, we'll go to roll call vote. Sean?
Kyo, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, no.
And Edinburgh, yes. So it passes on a vote of 4-1-0, 5 being present. And we will note to schedule a review of the policy. Actually, updates and review of board policies is one of our goals for the year. And Sluggan Welch has agreed to help spearhead that effort. So you have an action item, Patrick. Okay, thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Tracy.
Yes, thank you, everyone, for your time. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so next on, we'll go back to our prior agenda item, which is a request to close streets and put up signs for the high school graduation parade. And so joining us is Maureen Amiot, who's involved in the high school senior parade. So... If Maureen, you can unmute. Well, she's doing that. I can read some of the back, provide the background information. I don't know, is Roberta on as well?
I'm on, Alan. Can you hear me?
Yes, okay. So just as an introduction, Roberta Brown and Maureen Amiot are heading up a committee to organize a rolling parade for the Westboro High School graduating class of 2021. This would take place on Saturday, June 5th, starting at 10:00 a.m. The parade route will start at Hastings Elementary School and end at the high school. So it is going East Main Street to West Main Street. It's estimated to be over 300 cars in total. Additionally, there's a request to put signs along the parade route. Ms. Brown and Ms. Amiot have provided examples of the sign as part of the information provided to the board. Chief Purcell and Chief Laurie have submitted comments, which are also provided to the board, and they are in support of the parade and its route. And so if Roberta or Maureen, you'd like to provide any additional information, we can...
Absolutely, Alan. We're basically doing the same thing as we did last year with Brian Callahan. And, but we're just switching the route around. We're just gonna start from Hastings and at Westboro High School. The seniors are going to go back into the high school, and they're gonna take a sharp left to where the tennis courts are. And they're gonna do their farewell to their teachers, and they're gonna keep on rolling down onto Ruggle Street. Now, we're going to bring in classic cars as well. And we have about 100 classic cars coming into the parade. We're gonna merge them in. And they're going to be sitting at 106 East Main Street, which is the Reliant group used to be. Now it's a vacant parking lot. And so now, we're gonna merge them in, and we're gonna give them an extra kick. And Brian also got us the jazz band, which is like 10, five to 10 kids coming in. And we like to set them up at our furrows if Dominic agrees. And then I have a DJ in the middle of the rotary that's gonna play. And I like to have 100 signs going up and down the parade route. If people like to decorate, I'd like the parents to participate with their senior child, to participate in decorating, putting out balloons. We're gonna have the signs going up and down the route if possible. And the only sign that I request is who's gonna sponsor the DJ. So, and I like the, if possible, the storefronts to decorate, if they like to, to encourage and support the senior class of 2021. I wanted to make it into a good event, a really fun event this year, which I can get the classic cars. I can get part of the marching parade. I want to make it feel special, not only for the seniors, but for the rest of the community in town.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? Ian, no. Sean, no. Shelby?
So I have a couple of questions. First of all, I want to thank Roberta and Maureen for organizing this. I think it's a great, it's a great event. So we saw that previously. And not only for the seniors, but for the whole community. So thank you so much. I did have a couple, I did have a couple of questions or concerns. One is the street management. As someone that was sort of helping in that regard at the last parade, I feel like the streets should be, that enter onto East Main, East and West Main, need to be blocked off so that there's not traffic confusion, people turning around. The streets get really crowded with pedestrians. And so we just, I think, road closures of some sorts. I think, Christie, you might want to speak to that. Or I know Chief Laurie is on as well, was.
Right. I hear you on that. I was, I spoke with Chip Dappelite. And what we're gonna do, Shelby, is that we're going to continue with the traffic on the other side. So the other side will keep on rolling, and we're gonna merge the traffic, the cars into the parade, the classic cars. We'll have six go in, and then we just keep on merging the cars as we go by. This time, we're gonna have the rotary people, the Westboro Connect people on Church Street, Lyman Street, and on Milk Street going into the rotary. So all that we have to do is just kind of keep the parade rolling, just kind of put people on the route, like Willow Street or something. And then as soon as the parade goes by, then they'll just continue coming in. And it doesn't really stop that much. It's just gonna stop, Shelby, when the kids go by and the classic cars. That's it. We're gonna have just, we're gonna have yellow smocks on them, like Chip said. And we're all gonna help each other. We're more organized this time because I had more than two weeks. So everybody's supported. And we all talk to one another. And it's gonna, this time, it's gonna go smoothly, Shelby. So I'm really happy.
Yeah, and it's not that it didn't go smoothly last year. I think it was the first, and so it's expected that we learn from that and we improve. I just want to make sure that that is being addressed. So it's, you know, working with public safety. So, you know, I'll trust that that's being addressed. I will bring up something just as a follow-on to the last agenda item we just had, and that is signs. And that is that, per our current policy, sorry, back in 1991, we, the policy says that there can't be signs placed to stand on the rotary independently. You know, the policy is very specific. To Ian's point in our last agenda item, last year, we did have the, you know, banners congratulating the class of 2020. I feel like we are in a different space as it relates to the pandemic. And I'm gonna be, I'm just gonna be consistent with my last comments and the last agenda item in that I don't think that there should be signs placed on the rotary. When we want to address it as a policy as a board for future events, then that's fine. But I don't think, I'm fine if people want to place them on their personal property and you coordinate that with them, but I don't feel that they should be placed at the rotary. Those are my comments.
Okay, could I place it outside of the rotary, on the route? If I get permission from the homeowners and the store manager?
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, I think that if there's permission, and I, my other comments that I just have here on my own notes as I prepared, was I don't know, you know, where the town has like easements, you know, in terms of the strip of grass and all of that. So I mean, I trust that people are gonna be supportive of it, but I just, this is the Pandora's Box that I was concerned with opening. So, so that's, that's my, my only comment is specific to the rotary. And, you know, I think if you're gonna place a sign, not unlike someone placing a campaign sign, you want someone's permission to place it on their property.
Okay.
Thank you, Shelby. Okay, so, Roberta, do you have, you're gonna look for places other than on the rotary for the signs?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And Ian, you had a question or a comment?
Just a comment, I think, and agree with what Shelby said there. The one piece is just like campaign signs, if someone is there, in essence, holding the sign, then it's fine. So, Roberta, to that point, if there's somebody there, I think you mentioned a DJ, that's a person there that there could be a sign being held at that point. Or if you have people holding them, the rotary is fine. That's the policy. It's just having signs there and nobody around, just like any of us when we have campaign. Campaign, no, you can't stick them in the ground and walk away. You have to have somebody holding them.
Ian, that's a great, that's a great point. If the DJ has a, you know, banner in front of the table, and it's, I mean, that, obviously, that's a great point.
Okay, that's what I was gonna do. I was gonna, that was the second question. If I could put a banner on the table, because she's gonna use a table. So that just answered my question. That's all I need. It's just a little banner to put in front of her table, and that's it. I'll be happy with that. No problem. Can the storefronts decorate their store? Is that okay?
Absolutely.
As long as their landlord, whoever the owner allows for it, absolutely. And we would encourage him.
Okay, great. I think that's all I need.
Oh, excuse me, Roberta. Patrick has a question or a comment?
Yeah, just a comment. Hey, Roberta, great job on this. You and Maureen, thank you for doing this. I'm really looking forward to seeing it. I have a graduating senior next door to me, and I know that he is excited about the event. So it's great that, you know, the community is stepping up and doing this, and then you guys are leading the charge. So thank you very much.
Oh, yes. Well, we got Brian. Brian is the one. Brian and I are the one that, Maureen is part of my logistic team with the rest of them. But I gotta, I gotta give kudos to Brian Callahan because Brian Callahan is really good. And I, we really work together really good. So I have to give kudos to Brian Callahan as well, Patrick, but thank you very much.
Okay. I do have one follow-up question regarding the road closures during the parade. In addition to volunteers in yellow vests, is there gonna be some sort of marker? I realize my video is frozen. Hold on. Is there gonna be some sort of, you know, marker, either cones put down or one of the portable traffic diversion horses? So that there's something, a physical cue to drivers as well that the road's closed for the parade? I just, I would hate to see someone at one of those cross streets get impatient and try to inch their way or push the way or accelerate their way into or through or over a volunteer.
That's a good, yeah. I think I'm gonna talk to Chip Dappelite and the chief about it and see what they suggest about it. And then, by all means, Alan, I think that's a great idea. Yeah.
Okay, Chief Laurie?
So we're reaching out to the Semler Motorcycle Unit as well. So I'll have some answers probably the end of this week on how many motor units are coming. And they'll also assist, you know, as rolling roadblocks through certain intersections. So I put on, we'll have five added police officers that day. There's numerous volunteers. I personally, I kind of endorsed and appreciate the route going in the direction it's going. Last year, we had some issues with kind of two parades, one coming back. So I think this will satisfy that. And there's some testing going on at the high school. So there'll be a lot of parking spaces that are gonna be utilized for the kids. So I think this is gonna work out. We'll handle it like we did last year. Hopefully, we're gonna have a very safe event. Like I said, I plan on bringing Semler Motor Unit in as well. There'll be several motorcycle officers from outside communities.
Okay, great. Do I, would someone like to make the motion?
Sure, I'll move to close the road traveling west from Hastings Elementary School to Westboro High School for the purpose of a class of 2021 senior parade in accordance with the activities in the proposal letter that was submitted and subject to traffic rules and regulations.
Okay, thank you. And a second?
I'll second that. Marshall?
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote. Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Sean?
Kyo, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So it passes 5-0-0, 5 being present. Thank you to Roberta and Maureen and the entire team and our public safety departments and the school system for, you know, working together to make this happen again. We look forward to a great event.
Thank you, Alan and the board. We really appreciate that. And the senior class of 2021 does too. Thank you so much.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to agenda item number six. We're joined by Chris Pant, our DPW Director, with a request to declare items as surplus.
Good evening, everybody. So you should have in front of you a list of 10 items that we are requesting you to approve as surplus. These are all items that are no longer mission capable. It's not worth investing money into this equipment to repair it or replace it. So we're asking that you declare surplus, and we'll then dispose of it properly through an auction.
Okay, Shelby, you have a question?
I don't. I'm happy to make a motion.
Oh, excellent.
I move to declare the presented Department of Works, Public Works items as surplus.
I'll second that. Sluggan Johnson.
Okay, thank you, Marshall and Johnson, for the motion and the second. Any discussion or questions? Okay, seeing, hearing none, we'll move to roll call vote. My boxes, my Hollywood squares have shifted. So roll call vote, Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Sean?
Kyo, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So it passes on a vote of 5-0-0, 5 being present. Thank you, Director Pant. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a request to award bid for water facilities contract operator. I'm not sure if we have everything from the Proposal Review Committee or if we're passing this over as we posted a meeting prior to town meeting Saturday morning to address this as well if needed.
Yeah, so we're gonna pass over it tonight.
Okay. So we'll pass that over and move on to agenda item number eight. Discussion vote to suspend the Board of Selectmen's policy on drought water restrictions. Director Pant, you have the floor.
Okay, so the Board of Selectmen has a policy on drought warning restrictions. It was adopted in April 2002. We also have a Water Management Act permit that was authorized by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection in 2010. What we've identified is these two documents have some conflicting information in terms of water restrictions. Our Water Management Act is specific about what water restrictions we should impose based on certain criteria, and the memo that you've... And the memo that you've probably seen also lists criteria for, or, or steps we should take to conserve water. And, um, I think it's basically just creating confusion and, and something we need to clean up. And so our recommendation is that we suspend the policy from the Board of Selectmen, uh, continue with our Water Management Act, uh, permit as authorized by the DEP. And at a future date, we will update the policy to reconcile differences and more clearly state what our requirements are for water restrictions in a Board of Selectmen policy.
Okay, thank you, uh, Shelby, you have your hand up.
I do, uh, quick question, uh, Chris, um, the policy, the water management policy that you, um, cite, is that or will that be, uh, available, um, to the public on, through the website? Assuming this policy, the recommendation goes forward to suspend it?
The, the existing policy will be, I, removed from the website.
Okay.
Um, then we'll post our water restrictions that are taken from the Water Management Act, we'll cite that and the DEP permit number and all that sort of thing. And then at a future date, once we reconcile differences and get all the wording straight, and, and even terminology has changed over the last eighteen years. So we'll get all that correct and then we'll come back to you for, with a recommendation for an updated policy.
Okay, great, and my second question, if I may, Alan?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, and is, uh, I guess generally speaking, is the, um, um, the Mass, uh, I'm sorry, the DEP, the Water Management Act permit, uh, is that more restrictive than our Selectmen's policy?
It is more restrictive, but it's not, it's, it's what we, um, I know for sure was what we had out last year. Uh, and I, I, I think it's pretty much been what we've published over the past several years.
Okay.
The issue is if someone goes on the website, they find this policy and then they're like, oh, what's, you know, what do I do?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, okay, thanks very much, Chris, appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the Board of Selectmen's policy on drought water restrictions. Um, I guess I would like to add to the motion, you know, pending a review and recommendations for an updated policy.
Is that a motion, Alan?
Well, I'll, someone can just say so moved.
I did.
So Ian moved and.
Just, just one question on that motion, Alan, do we also, do we need to make a motion to also accept the Mass, the DEP water management? Policy, do we need?
I think it would help, to be clear.
What's a requirement?
Yeah, a requirement that we act on, I don't know that we have to adopt anything.
Yeah.
We're already required to abide by the permit as it's authorized.
I guess I only, Patrick, to your point, I only wonder if it just for, for the public's clarity, they would know that we have to accept that, so.
Well, so the, the policy would be updated per the permit, I mean, you, you can do it if you want, but it's not, it's not necessary.
Okay, if it's unnecessary, then we don't need to do it.
Okay. So do we have a second? Excellent, thank you, Selectmen Keo, okay, so any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Sean?
Keo, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes, so passes on a vote of five zero zero, five being present, um. Thank you very much, Director Pant.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, item number nine, um, we're joined by, um, Chief Purcell, who is fire chief and also heads our emergency management agency on a request to approve and sign the comprehensive emergency management hazmat plans. And so I will, um, I, 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 Chief Purcell, I'll give you the floor to introduce. And then we can open it up to, I know, um, a couple of members of the board have a couple of questions.
Sure, so, uh, hi, my name is Patrick Purcell, I serve as your fire chief here in the town of Westboro. I have Deputy Jason Fersky with me tonight. And, uh, just before we get started on the presentation, the quick background is that, um, the town actually didn't have an official emergency management director until I took over as fire chief. At that time, the town manager asked me to assume the responsibilities for that. And as we saw the position, positions start to grow and the, the requirements, uh, by, uh, MEMA, for instance, uh, the, the demands, uh, for the job, uh, grow, uh, I was allowed to, through the Board of Selectmen, appoint, uh, Deputy Fersky as the, uh, Deputy Emergency Management Director as well. Uh, and part of our responsibilities are that we manage the, uh, town's comprehensive emergency management plan. And that had not been updated since, uh, two thousand and nine or two thousand and ten, historically that is done every, about, about every ten years. Uh, and, uh, we also manage the hazardous materials emergency plan. Uh, one of Deputy Fersky's responsibilities is also is the chair of the local emergency planning committee. And if you don't know what that is, that's a, that's a committee that's put together, uh, a mix, a mix of private establishments or private, uh, businesses in Westboro and municipal employees. And what that really does is helps us, uh, get a handle on what hazardous materials are, is, are in existence or i- in the town of Westboro and develop plans to respond to incidents involving them and, uh, be able to protect the citizens. A requirement of the, uh, LEPC is to have that, we have it recertified every five years. And part of that recertification involves, uh, the things that you saw in your packet, the SEMP plan and, uh, the hazmat plan. And Deputy Fersky's gonna talk to you about those, uh, right now. Good evening, um, thank you for letting me come and discuss this with you, it's, uh, it, it's probably not the most invigorating topic and I apologize, Ian, it will be nothing about caprice in this, uh, this presentation. Uh, so the LEPC is due for recertification, uh, we're actually, uh, pushing the envelope a little bit overdue, but I've been working closely with our MEMA rep to, uh, to get that taken care of. Um, and, and one of the key components is getting the, uh, SEMP, the comprehensive emergency management plan together. And the way that I, FEMA throws an acronym at everything and a bunch of initials at everything and, and, yeah, it's very difficult to wrap your head around. The way that I look at the SEMP is the SEMP is kind of like the foundation, that's the base of everything that we're working off of. So that kind of sets us as a common terminology and kind of the four key components of, um, emergency management that FEMA points out, um, is, uh, preparedness, mitigation, response and recovery. And this document kind of highlights those four areas. And I, I think that, um, more of this document is used in the planning stages. Um, so if we were to plan an exercise, an event, or if we had a weather event coming down the road, this is a great document to reference that. The most, uh, critical component that we get out of this, and, uh, this is something that I've been, uh, very excited about is we staff our emergency operations center, the EOC, um, pretty much anytime that we have a storm, uh, a weather-related event, uh, or even, um, in times of, um, kind of, uh, civil unrest or any, any planned events that were, that were, uh, can forecast coming down the road. This, this document sets out the, the standard operating guidelines or basically each of the positions that we staff in the EOC between the police department, the fire department, the school department, the DPW, the town manager, I, I think I hit everybody. But it gives them the guidelines on what they're kind of responsible for when we put the EOC together. Um, and based off of that document, if for some reason or other Christie, Christie wasn't readily available to fill in and we had to plop Kim down into the position, she'd be able to kind of look, you can get an idea of the, the things and roles and responsibilities and expectations that she would be expected to follow. And again, uh, picking a department that was, uh, a little bit more depth, the police department, if they ended up down at the level of a sergeant being in the EOC, they would at least have a guidance on, on information that they follow. So, uh, our SEMP plan is really the basis, uh, it's also a public document, so this is kind of, uh, generic and doesn't get into a whole lot of specific, um, guidances. Uh, we do have additional plans coming down the road, uh, and we do have, currently have a continuation, continuity of operations plan, the COOP plan. Um, that's something that's not, uh, on the public, we do have, um, working with the Board of Health on a public morgue. Uh, we have a debris management plan that we're working on updating, we have, uh, the dam plans for Sandra Pond and Nichols. Um, a lot of these different plans, we, uh, Director Pant, DPW Director Pant, mentioned having a cybersecurity plan. Uh, we do have some stuff in the works, I'm actually gonna defer to the fire chief to, to address some of those questions on, uh, cybersecurity. But, uh, we do have a lot of those different plans that are in, in, in process. But we need to get this core, uh, foundation plan, uh, in the works and get that out there. Uh, again, the hazmat plan, that's a separate plan that was also needed for the LEPC to recertify. Um, the LEPC having full certification is important because it does afford us different grant opportunities. Other than that, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go too deep into it, trying to keep it on, on the, the thirty thousand. Throw in any questions or anything. So just before we do the questions, I wanted to throw out that, just as a reminder, so the documents before you, particularly the SEMP plan, that is just a foundation. What we do from beyond today is, and we have, like the deputy said, we have other things that in the works already. You will see annexes built into those and every time in it, one of the, one of those reports is done, isn't, and to go into the annex, it'll come before you for review. He talked about the continuity of operations plan that is done, uh, that does need to be updated. I haven't, I have not done that in the last, uh, few months, so that needs to probably be updated. And the big one that seems to be, uh, hitting hard across the Commonwealth is, and I, and I've learned a lot about this, is something I'm really not that well educated at, and I'm, uh, really trying to get myself up to speed and that is on cybersecurity. So, uh, within the last month, I put a project together with Mark Stockman and we wrote a, uh, project and submitted it to Homeland Security and got funding to have an, uh, audit done, a cybersecurity audit done for ourselves and for other communities. And we were just awarded that, uh, that, that, those, the funds for it, uh, we don't have them yet. But as soon as we get the money, we'll be, we'll be moving forward on that and that'll help with the, to develop the annex to go into this report. Um, there's a, there's a variety of other things that'll be coming before you. Uh, as of for today, this is just the foundation to get us started to, to redo the entire plan. By the time this is done, it's gonna be about probably five times thicker than, than what you already have to read. So I think you'd probably appreciate that coming at you in piecemeal as well.
Ab- absolutely, um, I'll open it up, uh, to the board for any questions or comments, I know Patrick, you had some?
Uh, yeah, I guess first of all, uh, in my brief tenure chief, I'll, I'll just mention you guys won the award for the largest volume of information. It is an amazing document and I am thrilled to see it in place, that you guys are working on it. It's fantastic body of proactive work, so the town is, is really well prepared. So kudos to you and, and Jason and the whole team that are working on it.
I can't lie, Deputy Fersky did the majority of the work, so, but thank you, he did, he really did.
My, my only question, um, and to be honest, I have not read through the whole thing, I went through, kind of skimmed through sections, just kind of get on, understanding what's going on. And one thing that I picked up on was, and, and I, I just wanted to get your opinion on this to see if there's anything we as a board can do to help. There, there seemed to be a little bit in my mind of, um, ambiguity in the local declaration of emergency. Um, and we don't have to solve this now, I'm just really curious if, if in that section, if you guys need the board to do anything around, uh, charter or bylaw to make sure that it's very clear as to how that local declaration of emergency, who, who does that? And, and how that pro- part of the process works, um, so that's really my only question to you.
Sure, so we've actually gone down this road, we declared a state of emergency, a local state of emergency when the microburst hit in, I believe, two thousand and sixteen-ish, uh, we kind of follow the standard across the Commonwealth and about ninety-nine percent of the communities, it usually is the chief elected official. So historically, what I've done, times one, but I've seen it done pr- prior, in the prior administration here, is when we set up the emergency operations center, we oftentimes invite the administration from town as well as the, the Board of Selectmen to the EOC in the morning and we do a briefing. And at that point, if we determine that we're gonna sign the, if we're gonna establish or declare a state of emergency, that is at the point where they would sign that off and that would be my responsibility to notify, uh, MEMA after that. So I don't really think you need, it's really a standard to operate, uh, and it's standard across the Commonwealth. There are a few play, a few communities that have opted to divert that responsibility to other administrative officials, but for the most part, it's the mayor, the chair of the Board of Selectmen, uh, r- really, that's, that's really about it, uh, city chairs, the city council.
Just as long as you have what you need, I just wanted to make sure it was clear, so, it sounds like you got what you need, thank you.
And, and, uh, I guess along those lines, just for clarification, um, deep in the document, it does say that it's the, uh, chief municipal officer. But, you know, towards the front of the document, to page fourteen, under planning assumptions, it says the select board. And so I think that's just one, there's just a slight inconsistency there, unless I'm, you know, misreading it. Um.
Yep, I don't know exactly which, uh, two sections you're talking about, Alan, but there are two distinct, um, positions. There are the chief elected official and then also the, um, municipal officer that puts me, I'll manage or not case.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll think, I can address it offline.
Okay.
Question, and then, um, before we go after other comments, just given the discussion of cybersecurity and cyber attacks, um, can that be added as a man-made hazard? In the vulnerability assessment section?
I, I really think that it's in our best interest to keep it separate in an annex, just because it's a really its own, its own animal. It's really becoming a big deal and if you really, I, I've, I've been learning a lot, there, there's actually over five hundred million attempts to access municipal, uh, infrastructure, bang, in the, just in the Commonwealth. And, uh, I think keeping it separate, unless I'm missing your question, I think keeping it separate, having our own policies regarding that is probably in our best interest.
No, no, I, I agree separate for policies and procedures, but in the intro- in the introductory phase of the document, you have a section that's threat, hazard and vulnerability assessment.
Sure.
I would, you know, um, under man-made hazards, you've got nuclear incidents and civil unrest. Um, we just might wanna add a bullet point with a sentence or two about cyber.
Okay.
Security.
Yeah.
Um, and then, and, and my final question was under natural hazards in that same section, um, just given the number of brush fires it seems we've had in the last couple of years and the fact that some of them became, you know, larger than we would like, if fire should be listed as a natural hazard as well?
Sure.
So, so Alan, when I look at that section, it looks to me that it's put into cyber threats, chemical, biological, radioactive, nuclear, high-yield explosives, threats and terror. I'm reading the same, one page.
Yeah, so it's, it's, cyber threats is mentioned in the introductory paragraph. Um, I'm just wondering if we should have a bullet point below with a little, you know, an additional sentence or two about the nature of the threat? Since it's, since it's new. So I, I, through my business, I get alerts and since the first of the year, I believe there have been ten successful ransomware attacks, attacks against municipal government entities in Massachusetts, so it's, it's definitely a concern.
Yeah, so I, I think that that, I mean, that's definitely an easy bullet point that could be added, I don't, I don't know that it's, um, it's probably just an oversight, um, in specifically mentioning it. Um, the oth- the other stuff on natural fi- on fire, I think that, um, when you look at fires in relative comparison to, um, wildfires all over the Midwest, I think we'd be hard pressed to reach that scale. But, um, it's definitely something I can look at.
Okay, thank you, any other, any other questions or comments? Shelby?
Yeah, uh, appreciate the update, um, and the overview because it answered, um, almost all of my questions, so thank you, um, very much. Um, I guess I'm curious in general, if, um, the section that talks about changes to the policy or changes to the SEMP, I guess, um, wow, I, the, by you Chief Purcell, town manager or the, um, or, uh, the deputy director, how would the board be notified of those changes? I'm looking at page two.
Oh, oh, Pat, I'm, I muted you, are you getting feedback? Sorry.
Sorry, any, any, anytime we do an amendment or a change, we'd be, uh, putting it in your packet and bringing it up before you.
Okay.
It's very rare that we actually make changes, to be honest, the most.
Yep.
I think, I think over the life of the last one, the changes that we actually fell behind on, but they were the most frequent with, were people's names.
Yep.
All the players.
Okay, and, and.
Any place that I could remain generic on a name and use more of a title as opposed to putting, you know, John Doe, putting, you know, DPW director or exposition to eliminate, trying to have to stay on top of that. I think that's, and looking at all of these plans, I think that's the biggest challenge is, is they, they put, you know, Sandy Jones is the contact and, and, and the phone number, but she's been gone for fifteen years, so.
Right, right, yeah, no.
Trying to stay ahead of that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, um, and where, where will this, this being that it is a public policy? Is it, uh, does a little of the fire department under emergency preparedness guy, which is, looks different certainly than what we're looking at here? Or is it, does it? looking at here, or is it, does it, it's a selectment policy?
So, there's two places that I'd eventually like to put it, uh, the first one would be up on our, uh, there's a link on our website, so that anybody would be able to read it. And then the second spot that it goes is that there's a, there's a site called Web EOC, which is controlled by MEMA, um, it'll get uploaded there, um, so whenever we activate the EOC, whether we activate it as, as, at our location or the alternate location, we would have access to it.
Okay. And just one other piece of feedback, just because documents get long, um, if it's possible at all to, um, have like a date in the footer, so that it's clear what version it is and what date, once it's in its, you know, um, that as we go along in the annexes, that would be, I think, helpful, just because it's, you know, you don't always have the first page and someone's giving you a copy of it. Thanks. Thank you very much for this work, I'm, I like Patrick very, very pleased that we have it, and appreciate you taking this, uh, on to, um, update it, cause it's clearly, you know, a small task.
The, the other thing that I do have, um, that, that, again, and about ten thousand pieces of information, so trying to just give you the highlights, we do have a field guide, um, book that's on the list to get updated, so it'll be kind of a, a condensed version of this, as well as, uh, some additional documents.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board, Ian or Sean? Okay, then I will entertain the motion.
I like the motion, uh, I move to approve and, um, sign the emergen- comprehensive emergency management and hazmat plans as presented.
I'll second that, Selectman Johnson.
Thank you, so moved and seconded, any further discussion?
It is a question, do we also need to, um, reauthorize the LEPC? Heard that talk, or is that just, does that come automatically once we approve these plans?
So, we had, there was, there was something, this is part of the process, I don't think you need to sign off on that. We had, uh, we had some other responsibilities, we had to host the tabletop drill, we did that a few months ago, and, uh, I think that, I think these are the three things, the primary things to recertify. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jay.
Correct. These are the, the three things, I needed, I needed the, uh, I need to pull a bunch of information out of this document, the most recent updated document to, uh, to put on the application, but there's nothing else that is required, that I'm aware of.
Perfect, so nothing that we have to authorize, there's no approvals we need, perfect.
I do not believe so.
Awesome.
Thank you. With that, I'll move to a roll call vote. Uh, Sean?
Akio, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
And Patrick?
Welch, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes, so passes a vote of five zero zero, five being present. Thank you much, very much, chief and deputy, and in both of your roles, for both of you, in pulling this, uh, together and continuing the effort, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is, um, a presentation from Chief Lori about police department cruisers.
So I'm gonna try to pull up this presentation, um... Can everyone hear me? Hello?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay. Uh, so there was some discussion in town, um, and we dealt with it at the last town meeting as well, uh, colors of the cruisers, uh, tinted windows, so I decided, going back into town meeting this Saturday, that I'd address it again, hopefully to avoid, um, having to get up on town meeting floor again about this, and I also wanted to throw in a couple of slides, some issues about, um, one of the symbols on our cruisers, um, is, uh, the, a thin blue line, uh, I wanted to explain that as well. So, uh, our cruisers in town have changed over time. Uh, Chief Parker, uh, the scheme was all white, uh, Alan Gordon, it was a blended black and white, uh, and under my leadership, uh, management, we, uh, have a solid black cruiser. And you can see, uh, in the back, uh, you can see, you know, the all-white car and the black.
Excuse me, chief? We're, we're seeing the PowerPoint application and not the presentation?
Oh, it's on my screen, um...
If you, if you just go to, start from the be- if you go from beginning, in the top left?
You see it now?
Here's, here's to stop presenting and select the different, the different view?
And now it's, right, you were showing the picture before Jeff.
I don't know what I did here.
There are a few ones, I can pull it up.
So how about this, I'm gonna send you the current presentation right now.
Is it the one you sent today?
Um, I did some updates to it.
Okay.
Okay.
I tried it again, I don't know if you can see it.
Nope, no, I got it. I'll pull it up, I can present it for you, hold on, just a second. Okay, here we go. Okay, is that visible to everyone?
Yes.
Okay. And then, we've covered the colors, so now the picture that you were talking about?
Yeah, and so this is the, uh, the picture, um, of the cars, uh, from the past, who includes an all-white scheme in the back, you can go on to the next slide. Um, so basically, some people felt it was intimidating, and, and my response to that is, I mean, this is a, you know, a Ford Explorer, uh, it's, it's not a Humvee, it's not a tank, um, it's, it's a utility vehicle, uh, that are on the streets daily. Uh, you can go to the next slide. Uh, you can go to the next slide. And if you can just hit play, this is from last year's town meeting. I can't hear it. But, I, I can't hear Alan either. Basically, in essence, this was a, this was a resident on town meeting floor, basically, uh, stating that, uh, what was important to him, uh, was who was in the cruiser, uh, and I've talked about on numerous occasions, about, you know, hiring extremely hired to manage easy, um, and it is about our employees, and the safety of our town and our employees. You can go to the next slide. I think you missed, yeah, so, so basically, this is one of our officers that was, that was recently hired, uh, under my watch, um, this is Alicia O'Brien, uh, she was named employee of the month in town this week for a lot of her community policing initiatives she did, um, and, and this is who's in your cruisers, uh, these professional officers, you can go to the next slide, that, you know, are really doing a, a really good job, uh, in very tumultuous and difficult times. Again, we have two officers, uh, community policing officers, Officer Dyson, Officer Trainer, um, you know, with our youth and, and with the public, uh, you can go to the next slide. Again, uh, following safety initiative by the three officers that I just mentioned during COVID, um, myself and other officers attended, um, this is your police department, very approachable, uh, and, and like I said, the bottom line, to keep our offices safe, you can go to the next slide. Again, local car wash, um, you know, our staff, I mean, we try to participate in, as you know, in as many community policing events as possible, you know, you talk about this parade, there's gonna be a lot of work for my staff, you know, to ensure safety, and, and we embrace it, quite frankly, and, and the only thing that has changed, there's no issues that I was aware of, is basically, um, you know, when, when COVID happened, and a lot of the social, um, you know, unrest, you can go to the next slide. This initiative, um, and the reason why I, I put this in is, is basically, um, you know, we have a park and walk, uh, that we do on shift, where we get out of the cars and we walk around, we have an initiative called No Shave November, where the officers donate their own money to assist a family in need, and, and this particular year, uh, we decided to help a family that, uh, they were looking to actually purchase a bed for their child, they needed a bed. So, one of our officers during his park and walk, um, Officer Daryl Jones, he entered Boston Interiors, and he says, hey, why do you have facial hair? And he explained it, and this is where we partnered with Boston Interiors, and they not only have supplied the bed, they supplied everything, uh, you know, from pillows to blankets to sheets, um, and this is us connecting with the community, and, and that is who this police department is, it's not an intimidating police department, uh, and, and don't get me wrong, um, you know, when we need to, to, to handle tough things, we will, and we have the training to do that, um, but, you know, I don't believe our cruisers are intimidating at all, this is who we are, this is the Westboro Police Department. If you can go to the next slide. So, this came up, and, and a lot of people who, they're concerned about the black, the tinted windows, and, and there's several reasons for the tinted windows, and you can go to the next slide, Alan. Um, and basically, um, we just had a couple of recent house breaks, where we had to do the, the people at home, when the home was broken into, someone grabbed the television and ran out, um, and basically, we, you put that resident in the cruiser and for a show up, to identify the individual, and it protects witness identity. Um, officers utilize the privacy glass with a woman or a child during a tense domestic situation, um, you know, it's, we wanna make sure, maintain their dignity, um, and also we have stranded motorists who sometimes are reluctant, uh, cause they don't wanna be seen in a cruiser, and I'll go to the next slide, um, also, we don't wanna, uh, you know, offend, you know, prisons that we arrest. We as, we see just compliance, so we have computer access in the cruisers, uh, there's core information that must be kept out of view, uh, and officers can focus on tasks, uh, uh, without being violation of that, and, and quite often, if you look at his modal dat- data terminal, uh, to his right, um, you know, he does, we do reports, our officers, our, our men and women do reports in the car, and that, that's distracting, and we wanna make sure, uh, that they're safe, and, and I understand, I as chief, as a temporary caretaker of this department, have to look at the one percenters, what could possibly happen? And if you can go to the next slide? That, that basically, the multicolored cruisers, um, there is a savings, because we don't have to paint the clips white, the doors white, um, you know, and, and I talked about doing their reports in the car, um, and our equipment is protected, we do have very expensive equipment in there, uh, and we wanna make sure heat, everything else, that, that it's safe. And again, I had mentioned the prisoner transport, Alan, if you can go to the next slide? If you could just see if it'll play, if the volume doesn't work, we can skip it, and I can just explain it?
No, it's... Nope, it's not letting me play it, unfortunately.
So, so what this is, is this, this happened out in California, we're two deputies, we're in, sheriffs, we're in their cruiser, and, and our man walked up to them, uh, and, and shot them multiple times. Uh, there was a female officer, she's a thirty-one-year-old, uh, mother, um, you know, these are human beings, and our officers are human beings, and we wanna make sure, and there was one woman that went on a social media page and said, you know, she wants to see if the officer's in the car or not in the car, um, you know, and, and our, my point is, um, I wanna make sure they're safe, and, and I can assure you, the officer that's in the car, um, is very professional, um, and very well-trained, and it is ultimately, it's, it's for their safety. You can go to the next slide. And, yeah, if we can go back, so, there was a complaint made to town, and I won't read this, you know, verbatim, um, and, and like I said, hopefully we'll be able to play it at town meeting, I sent it to, uh, IT today, but they were upset because they feel that, that somehow, that this, this symbol on our cruiser, which is a symbol, that I'm going to explain in a minute, uh, and that the, that this, this, the flag was carried in the Capitol, along with many American flags, um, where we don't believe the American flag, nor do we believe the thin blue line flag, um, is any type of, uh, symbol of hate, in, in fact, the thin blue line has not been recognized as a hate symbol by the Anti-Defamation League or the Southern Poverty Law Center, and that's from, uh, Mass Chiefs, uh, we discussed this at a meeting, this, this very topic. Um, "The black space above represents society, order and peace, while the black below, crime, archy chaos, the thin blue line running between them, law enforcement keeps crime from pervading society, when placed in the context of a flag, there is an added element of patriotism, and as illustrated, the star symbolizes the law-abiding citizens who benefit from the sacrifice of our heroes on the line made to protect, protect them. The thin blue line flag is flown as a matter of principle to show support for the thankless work that police officers do, law enforcement often look on it, look on it as a reflection of courage and tribute to those who have fallen in line of duty. The thin blue line flag, uh, does not represent any political faction or movement, uh, the, the think blue line does not represent hateful ide- the thin blue line flag does not represent hateful ideology." You know, this became popular nineteen fifty, uh, Chief Parker from the Los Angeles Police Department, uh, he's the one that, that initiated this, and, and I wanted to add, um, you know, in this presentation, the military, the fire department, dispatchers, rescue, uh, all have a symbol, similar symbols, uh, and this flag on the Westboro Cruiser was put there, uh, to honor those, quite frankly, that made the ultimate sacrifice, to bring those officers their memories, their legacies on patrol with us, and I will tell you, um, in my humble opinion, it would destroy morale to remove that flag from the cruiser, and I can tell you as your police chief, um, it's a symbol, it's a symbol to honor those that really have given it all for their towns, and if people think it can't happen in communities like Westboro, um, I will just say, I worked in, in, in communities in Auburn with three officers, three, two were shot and killed, and one was, died in a motor vehicle accident. Uh, the James Lanchitis, um, he was shot and killed in Shrewsbury, his son's a lieutenant, um, and also a pilot in the military, uh, I spoke at his killer's parole hearings on two different occasions, it can happen, uh, and, and that, and Shrewsbury touches our borders. And, and just to conclude, the Westboro Police Department works hard and remains committed to building trust and legitimacy with our citizens by providing professional service, and I've said this countless times, that is second to none. As an organization, we embrace a diverse workforce reflective of the community we serve. We are not defined by the color or style of equipment we use to keep you safe, we are defined by the professional compassionate and community-oriented officers that serve your community every day, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, I can't tell you how proud I am of them, uh, honored I am to be your police chief, I'm, I'm hoping this isn't an issue again, um, you know, at, at town meeting, um, this is a police vehicle, um, that is driven by all segments of society, uh, it happens to be black, and, and I find it almost ironic in these times that somehow black is intimidating, um, where we're embracing, you know, what's going on throughout this country now, we, we are a hundred percent on board, you know, with any organization, whether it be Black Lives Matter movement or anything that's against police brutality and police violence, and this cruiser is not in any shape, shape or way meant to be some intimidating vehicle, it's a safe vehicle for our officers and our community, um, and, and as I stated before, uh, hopefully this issue will be put to rest, um, but like I said, just to conclude, extremely honored, uh, to be your chief, working with some of the finest men and women of this department, and when I say diversity, where right now, we're hiring two officers this July, and, and we're, we're hiring, you know, an officer, um, that is gonna show the makeup of the community, and I'm very proud to... um, that is going to show the makeup of the community. And I'm very proud to say, we didn't, uh, give this, this officer a conditional offer, uh, based on the color of his skin. We gave this offer because he was the most qualified person for us available at this time. And I, I applaud the town manager and the board when we negotiated with the Patrolman's Union, bringing in the educational incentive because the two officers we're bringing in, uh, one has a master's degree and one has a bachelor's degree, highly trained, specialized. We're, we're a special place. This is a great town. And I promise you, as the temporary caretaker, I'm going to ensure that we hire, uh, we promote the very best. And there's some exciting times coming that we're going to be talking about in the future with a number of promotions and hires uh, due to retirements, um, and different things. So again, not to be long-winded. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity, uh, to address the board again, uh, be happy to answer any questions. Uh, but I just want to be clear, this is the Westboro Police Department Cruiser. Uh, and, um, and any change that will be, will be made to that cruiser, uh, will be when, when my tour of duty here in town has been complete. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions or from the board? Shelby?
Um, not so much a question, but just a comment. Chief Laurie, I want to thank you for the presentation. I learned some things I didn't know. Uh, but I really do, uh, appreciate, um, sort of the, the whole picture that you've shared with us. Um, the, uh, concerns about, um, officer's safety sort of to me were intuitive, but the understanding about, um, protecting potentially witnesses uh, as well as, uh, information that is in the vehicle, um, certainly from a health perspective, I can relate to that. So, um, uh, you know, I, I think this presentation is helpful. I hope the public listens to it and, uh, um, hears it. I think you said you're going to bring it to, uh, town meeting. Is that correct?
So yes, um, this video that you didn't see, like I said, and there's, there's just a resident that, um, kind of just, in his words reflected what I said.
Yeah, I remember, I remember that very well. Um, but I, so anyway, seriously, thank, thank you for this because I, I think it's, um, information is powerful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief. Okay. Moving on, next on the agenda is, um, a vote, a discussion and vote to amend, uh, the banner policy. So Christie, if you wouldn't mind introducing this.
Uh, yep. So, um, as the board's aware, we developed a, a banner policy for the banner that, um, goes across West Main Street. And we did that in the fall of twenty eighteen after the polls were put up and we found that the community wanted to use it. Um, we amended it in July of two thousand twenty because the dimensions that were stated on the policy, um, were not the correct dimensions according to the DPW. So we did fix it. Um, more recently, um, and the board has heard this discussion, there's an interest in, um, uh, groups using the banner, uh, light pole spaces. Um, and so we needed to update the policy to allow for that. Um, and so this policy, um, added, so this policy instead of being the West Main Street banner policy is just the banner policy. Um, we're keeping, uh, things consistent with the West Main Street banner that goes across, uh, West Main Street, um, close to Town Hall. Um, we just updated some of the language. Um, and then, um, we added the light pole banner policy. So that gives priority to town-sponsored information and events, and then gives the second priority to advertising or fundraise for community events to be held in Westboro. So we talked about this when the Rotary came before you, um, and, and gifted to the town, um, the, the downtown, um, winter lights. And that's something that they had asked if they would be able to use the poles on the banner. Um, I know the cultural council is also interested in using that space. Um, and I know the Veterans Department is also interested in using that space to do hometown hero banners. Um, and so those, because those take a lot longer for the DPW to put up, um, there's a longer um, amount of time that they can be left up, which is, uh, a period of ninety days. Um, and then everything else is, is fairly consistent. There's red lines on the policy because they moved some things around. Um, but in terms of banner requirements for both the West Main Street banner and also the light pole banners, um, because we did look back and find that the light pole banners had been different size, had been ordered, uh, to be different sizes. Um, in working with the DPW, we've just asked that people consult with the DPW, um, before ordering the banners so that we can confirm that the size is appropriate based on the experience that we've had.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Shelby?
Uh, yep. So, um, appreciate the consolidation of this policy with, um, the, uh, light pole banners so that it's all in one. Um, it, it read, Christie, a little bit confusing to me. I wasn't sure at times in the policy where if we're, what banner we were talking about. So, um, uh, so for example, it says time allow, banners are allowed for up to two weeks. And then time allowed is under light pole banners. I, I mean, I think that there are two different timelines, but just the, the way it read, I, I just thought that maybe we should be specific in each section.
Well, I think Shelby, the first section is the West Main Street banner. That's highlighted in the second section, light pole banners. Uh, the first time allowed, first the West Main Street banner, the second time allowed is under the light pole banner section.
Well, I, yes, I thought that Ian, but then after the light pole banner section, then if you look at the, the, the following requests to be for banners, then it's now talking about all kinds of banners. I think, I just, I just think it could be, um,
Okay. So, so it may be hard to look at in the red line, but Ian's right. There's two sections, um, and then the end is just about how to make a request for hanging either type of banner.
Okay. Well, as long, as long as it's clear and doesn't, you know, it, it doesn't create ambiguity, it might be the red line. Thank you. Thank you for pointing the other question.
Could, could we just put a heading?
Sure.
That is, you know, procedure to request, you know, or how to request so that it's clear that's separate from the two sections describing the regulations. Okay. Um, any other questions or feedback? Okay. Patrick?
Yeah, just in light of our earlier topic around the Rotary banners and the fact that we were allowing the Veterans Advisory Board to potentially hang a, a banner up here, is that? It, it doesn't fall under, if I, if I'm reading this correctly, it doesn't. I don't know if it falls under any one of the four categories listed i- i- as far as um, a description. So is that something that we should include?
Hmm, I would.
It's a town sponsored event.
Nope. Thank you, Christie. I was going to say the same thing. The flag on the Rotaries and that banner would be a town-sponsored event.
A town, okay. So you, okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to approve the banner policy as presented and amended.
I'll make the motion. Oh, Ian, no, no, Ian, you got it. Go ahead.
Either way.
I think Shelby won. Ian, are you going to second?
I will second Shelby.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, roll call vote. Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Sean?
Yo, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. The motion passes on a vote of five zero zero, five being present. Next item on the agenda is, um, amendment to a discussion vote to update the fuel-efficient vehicle policy.
So we're gonna, Alan, we're gonna actually pass over this one for this evening.
Okay. And so we'll move it to a future agenda? Excellent. And then on that note, um, next on the agenda is a mo- a discussion and vote to approve the Climate Action Plan Letter of Support. And so Christie, if you'd like to introduce that.
Uh, yep. So I apologize that that wasn't in your packet, um, but I did send that out in an email. It's a very brief letter of support, um, that the, um, Climate Action Plan Group had, um, requested as an appendix. You may have seen that when you're reading through the document that they had an expectation of that letter. Um, and so, um, I'm just putting that before you so that we can, uh, upon your approval, forward that off to the Climate Action Plan Task Force who is working to, host the Climate Action Plan and working with CMR PC to, to advertise, uh, the completed plan out to the community.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments on the letter? Okay. Then I will move to approve the Climate Action Plan Letter of Support as presented.
Second. Marshall?
Thank you. Um, half task, any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, roll call vote. Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Sean?
Kyo, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. Passes, motion passes on a vote of five zero zero, five being present. Okay. Next item on the agenda, I will hand off the floor to, um, Christie and Kim. It is a discussion vote on interdepartmental transfers.
Yep. So as some of you are aware, um, in May and June of each year, we're able to do interdepartmental transfers as long as they're approved by both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. Um, and so what that means is that you, um, we can, upon the approval of those of your board and the, and the Finance Committee, um, we can move money from, um, you know, one budget to another. If there's X, if there's, uh, a need in one budget and there's excess in another, we can move the money. So there's no, I know there's some, sometimes there's confusion about sort of when you're taking money from different departments and going into other departments, is there some sort of, uh, correlation or, um, reason that you're going to into one department and they're really, um, there's really no relationship there. It's really just about, um, where there's available, uh, money and, and what, and which departments have the need. So in this case, so, so you'll see this on the agenda in all of May and June. Um, in this case, uh, this is actually a fairly easy one. So town meeting votes the salary and wages line and also votes the expenses line. So we can't move money in between those two lines, um, until May and June, uh, with the approval of both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. So, um, the Zoning Board of Appeals is asking that we move, um, eight hundred dollars from the salary and wages line, um, into the expenses line, uh, because of, uh, money needed for advertising this year. And this has already been approved by the Finance Committee.
Okay. That was going to be my question. So any other questions or comments or concerns? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the interdepartmental transfer as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. Select Board members, Johnson and Welch. Uh, with seeing no hands up for further discussion or comment, we'll do the roll call vote. Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Sean?
Kyo, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So it passes on a vote of five zero zero, five being present. Item fifteen on the agenda is, um, any follow-up discussion with respect to the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget and our annual town meeting warrant?
This is just, oh, sorry.
No, can I just ask, I just want to make sure, because I know sometimes changes come through, is the, um, information in our packet what we should be referring to, Christie, as you start speaking, or is there anything more current in your email?
Um, so this is really just a placeholder. So in your packet, I believe that's the posted warrant.
Yep.
Yeah. So, so we, so that hasn't changed, that can't change.
Right, right.
Um, and then there's, I, I didn't put anything in, um, this was really just a placeholder because we have town meeting coming up on Saturday. Um, so I don't have anything specific if the board wanted to bring anything up. I did forward you today draft motions, um, which actually have subsequently been reviewed by town council. So those will be a little bit different. Um, the board doesn't weigh in on those typically because it's already, um, just taking the actions that we've already discussed. Um, and town council will certainly, um, make sure that the verbiage is appropriate. Um, the only other piece that I just wanted to mention is I did send out the speaker list. Um, and as I mentioned in my email, um, the ones that are under the Board of Selectmen, I just sort of randomly assign um, and try to sort of follow the interest of what I think that you individually might be interested in, and there's others that you might just get. So, um, and just also, um, especially, especially for Sean and Patrick, if you're listed as a presenter, um, that means that, um, you'll, you'll, uh, make the motion and then, um, I typically, most of the articles, you'll, I'll just give you some bulleted, um, statements that, that you can make, uh, related to the article. Um, those are almost complete, so I can send those out. So if you have questions, you can certainly follow up with me. So I guess at this point, unless there isn't anything else, any other questions related to the warrant or the, the budget, you know, you could fight over which articles were assigned to you. Um, but other than that, I don't, I don't have anything specific.
If some, if someone feels particularly passionate about an article or there's a particularly long motion that they want to read, um, you know, uh, you know, just let Christie and I know. We're, we're happy to shuffle things around.
I knew our selectmen, right?
I think Ian got the longest one though. Who did?
Oh, jeez.
You're good though. You're good.
It's because you're so good at reading all those proclamations.
So I think that's it. I just wanted to keep that on there if people had questions, but.
Okay. So.
Alan, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, actually unrelated to the budget and warrant articles, but more about town meeting. I know, um, man, I don't even know what the, the temperature looks like, but I, I believe last year at town meeting, um, in the late spring that we, uh, as a board determined that it would be, uh, business casual versus business dress. So I would throw that out there as a, um, option for us and then we could communicate. If we so believe, we can ask Christie and Kim to communicate that to department heads, et cetera.
Unless I hear objections, I'm perfectly fine with business casual and not having to be in a suit and tie.
Great. We'll let the.
I just picked out my tie for this event.
We, we don't, we're, we're not saying you have to be business casual.
That's true.
You can show up and put us to shame.
Tie.
You know, um, you know, our town moderator has been known to show up at community events in, in, you know, top hat and tails. So we shall, we shall always see. Patrick?
I just had one question. Uh, Christie, on the, uh, town water contract, um, did, did, you said that it earlier that it got posted for Saturday morning before the meeting? What, what time is that at? I'm sorry. I didn't see it yet.
Um, eight AM.
Eight AM. Okay. Thank you. We'll just meet at, at the school.
Yep.
Yep. Yep. We'll get, we'll get good parking spaces. Okay.
I don't know. People camping outside to get the, uh, first in line.
That's true. That's true.
Like a Chick-fil-A opening.
We need to get a hot dog truck out there or a donut truck and we'll get lots of people.
Yeah. Good idea.
Okay. So, um, next on the agenda, um, is something I want to bring up, sort of a discussion vote about, um, the timing, but you know, moving towards, um, as the town's heading towards moving, you know, towards reopening and the governor and, and the COVID nineteen experts at the state level are relaxing restrictions to discuss the timing of and process, uh, related to going back to in-person meetings. Um, as folks may be aware, the school committee, um, has had a couple of meeting, in-person meetings, um, at the Great Hall in the Forbes Building. Um, they are masked and at six-foot distances, so they're spreading out. Um, their caveats are that, um, you know, there is a capacity, still capacity limit in the rooms. And so, um, they ask that, uh, that be used by people with business before the board, um, or people there for, um, citizens' request, which is their open forum. And that if people aren't comfortable or aren't able and want to participate in open forum, they can send it in writing and have a member of the board, um, read it into the record. And so that's how they're handling the meetings. It's a little bit hybrid. Um, and so I'm wondering what, you know, our comfort level is and our thoughts about returning to in-person meetings. And I'll open it up for discussion. Ian?
I'm entirely comfortable with, um, if the board decides to move to in-person meetings. Um, you know, I think that we're, um, moving ahead as, um, a community, a state and a country hopefully, but I think it's, um, I think it's good. I think it would be good for, um, the community, for us to meet in person, folks to be able to present in person, um, as long as we just observe, uh, all the requirements that are still, uh, in place. But I would be comfortable, um, if others were. Um, but again, this is, I look at it as a board decision, but personally, I'd be comfortable with going back and meeting in person.
Okay. Any other comments or feedback? Now ask, Shelby?
Yeah, I, same here.
Yeah, I, same here as Ian. Um, my one question, cause admittedly I haven't watched any school committee meetings since they've been back in person, is, um, is the audio quality working with them being masked? Because I know sometimes we have challenges unmasked and, um, I wouldn't want that to, you know, we'll be able to hear each other, but I just didn't know the audio. I don't know if Westboro TV has had any feedback from that.
Um, the meet, the meetings I've watched, the auto qua, the audio quality has been good. Um, you know, I, I think there's two aspects to this. One is, you know, how we return to in-person meetings, but then also, you know, having the meetings be in this format has had some benefits, right? And that, um, you know, it's, it's easier when we're presenting for us to share a screen and, and amplify it than it is, you know, historically when presentations are made and Westboro TV is, you know, showing an image of what's being projected on the wall in Memorial Hall, right? And so, yeah, I, I think as we make this transition, um, we can work with Westboro TV to see if there's a way to, you know, reconfigure the system in Memorial Hall a little bit that would allow for some of the technical advantages of having the online component. Um, I also think long-term, just as a, you know, um, a convenience, um, to those with business before the board to allow in remote participation. I mean, we have, you know, site plan reviews come to us and the architect and the engineer are from Canton or from New Hampshire. And, um, to give them the, the ability to participate remotely as opposed to having to drive in, um, and have the entire team in person, um, is something we might wanna consider as we move forward as well. Um, I guess I have a question for Christie and Tim and that, I don't know if you've had a chance to speak with department heads. Um, they're often, you know, as we saw this evening, pretty active participants in our meetings. Um, and wanna make sure that, um, if there's any feedback or concerns from department heads about us returning to in-person.
Um, I haven't, you know, I, I don't think there's much feedback. I, I don't think there's any concern. I know that, um, I think, uh, Selectman Marshall had made a comment at one point about, um, trying to figure out how we might sort of continue this practice in the future for people to present, uh, remotely. And I think, you know, if we were able to figure that out, I think that that would be appreciated. Um, I was actually on a Mass Municipal Association call today and I know that there's a lot of things like this that they're sort of trying to work through, um, in anticipation of the full reopening. Um, and, and, you know, there's a lot of practices that came up throughout COVID that I think people are hoping to keep in place. So I think we'll get additional guidance, um, you know, just going forward because there are many people looking into this. Um, obviously, it's very important that before the governor lifts the state of emergency, we have clarity on all of these open meeting law, um, the AVCC, uh, alteration of premises, things that we did. There's, there's many things that will be impacted by the governor's full reopening. I know that's more than what you asked me for, but, um, I think there's a lot coming down from the state, uh, related to things like this.
So from a timing perspective, you know, would be, you know, would we look at, you know, our first meeting after town meeting, two weeks from tonight? Or would, you know, we look to start this with our first meeting in June? As far as going back to in-person, any, any thoughts from the board? Patrick? I call on you because you're unmuted.
It's cause I forgot to put myself back on you. Uh, I guess my only thought, I, no, I'm not opposed to going back. Um, I guess I'll look for, uh, the governor and the, and the government, you know, federal government's guidelines on how we can meet in person, uh, in a space of that size with as many people. Do you, do we have to wear masks even though we're, we're vaccinated, those types of questions? Um, and I have no idea if all of you are all vaccinated, but, um, I would not be opposed to starting the week after, uh, after annual town meeting, um, provided that we have those guidance, that guidelines from, from the governor and, 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 you know, federal governments.
Okay, any other thoughts?
Yeah, Alan, I'm, I'm, I'm okay as well. Um, you know, I think two weeks from now, everybody will have had the opportunity, if they want to, at least get one shot, you know, and so we can have a certain degree of confidence. Um, yeah, I, I think I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think following town meeting is a, is a great time to do it. Let's just.
Okay. So, um, why don't, um, I take as an action item to work with Christie and Westboro TV? And, you know, between now and then, sort of meet and do a walkthrough of Memorial Hall, figure out exactly how we'd set up the seating for the social distancing, well, the physical distancing, right? Um, with, you know, with respect to the sound system and the cameras and things of that nature. Um, as well as take a, you know, take a step back, look at the current guidance, um, for how we'd set up the room. Um, and unless there's something that would prevent us from doing so, we would look to meet in person, starting with our next meeting. Christie?
I just wanted to mention sort of a follow on that point, um, and I apologize for leaving it off my town manager report, but we are looking to bring everyone back in fully open, uh, town buildings, um, also following town meeting on Monday, May seventeen.
Okay, so it fits in with that as well. Okay, I don't believe we need a formal vote on this.
Just a quick question on that, Christie. Will, um, I guess the policies of, of the buildings and things like that, are those still in effect in regards to, you know, people signing in, people at the front door tracking, you know, all of those types of things? Are those still in place?
Um, yep, so we do have, people do have to sign in, um, at the front door. Um, you know, we still have, um, the Plexi last and you still have to wear masks. Uh, Kim has updated our, um, policies to be sent out, um, tomorrow, um, in terms of following on what the governor has, has said.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so nothing further on that item. Um, next on the agenda is, um, approval of meeting minutes. Um, we've got two sets, uh, March fifteenth and March twenty-third. And to keep this simple, um, uh, do people have any comments, questions or corrections for either set of minutes? We'll start with March fifteenth. Okay, I see none. Any for March twenty-third? Okay, then I will make a motion that we approve the Board of Selectmen minutes for March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, as presented.
Seconded.
Okay, and thank you, Patrick, for the second. Seeing no further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Ian.
Johnson, yes.
Sean.
Kyo, yes.
Shelby.
Marshall, yes.
Patrick.
Welch, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. Both sets of meetings are approved on a vote of five zero zero, five being present. Um, item eighteen on, uh, the agenda is issues and correspondence. And so I will sort of go in the same order of my Hollywood squares here on the screen and start with Selectman Johnson.
Sure, just a, just a couple of things here. One is, um, as the representative, uh, selectman on the municipal building committee, we continue to meet on the Forbes project. I think we're making progress to, uh, try to come to final resolution and close out. Um, and have, uh, had, um, subsequent smaller meetings with our, uh, owner's, uh, project manager, um, and things to continue through. So there, there's still a couple of loose ends, but I feel good that we're making, um, solid progress and hopefully, um, very soon we'll be able to present back that, uh, we have, um, done final closeout on the Forest Municipal Building Project. So more to come on that one, but just wanted to give the update that, that, that is moving along. Um, and then the second thing is, um, um, wondering whether, you know, after town meeting, um, we may as a board want to, and I think I've done this at least a couple of times in the board and Finance Committee days, but, um, as everybody knows, we continue to have issues with, uh, the East Main Street, uh, railroad bridge and tractor trailer trucks, uh, hitting that bridge. It's becoming a nuisance and, um, you know, as things again begin to reopen and traffic, uh, returns to more normal levels, which it appears to be doing anyways, um, I'm wondering whether it's something we may want to, um, talk about as a board and then figure out some next steps about maybe some, and whether it's a task force or something that I, that I think we should talk about it. It's, I'm sure others on the board have gotten complaints or comments from residents, so, um, as I have. And so I just throw that out there as something that as, um, time permits, I think we should, um, look to address and see if there may be, um, options or suggestions that we can do to improve the situation. And that's all that I had.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Selectman Kyo.
Hey, thank you. Um, no, I just, I know we talked about the vaccine side earlier, but, uh, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody involved. It's been a tremendous success, um, just, uh, all the goodwill, I think, that it, it's shown and it, and it is received. Um, I also wanna say thank you on behalf of two of my kids who briefly get vaccinated over there, got their first shots. So, um, just a wonderful job by the police chief and everybody involved. And, uh, just thank you all very much. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Just as a side note, I get my second shot there tomorrow, so I'm very excited. Really vaccinated as of tomorrow at, in Westboro.
Awesome, awesome. Shelby?
Uh, thank you so much. Um, so, uh, just a quick update from some of the committee work, uh, that I'm assigned to. So from the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, the, uh, committee has, um, uh, is heading down a path of sort of three primary areas of focus at this time. Um, one is, um, uh, looking at recognizing, and this will come before the board, I believe, on the twenty-fifth, uh, if I've got the date right, um, but recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. The, uh, committee has not taken a vote on that, but that is on a meeting, but that will come before this board as a recommendation or not. Uh, we're also focused on, uh, language accessibility. Um, in our, uh, town is our residents and businesses engaged with the town and services. And looking at the need for an organizational assessment as it relates to all things sort of first name inclusion. So, so three, uh, pathways that we're headed down at this point. Also wanna give an update on the trustees of Soldiers' Memorials. Um, we're approached by, um, David Nurse, who many of you probably know. Um, and he's done an extensive amount of research, actually, on the full contingency of militia Minutemen, um, who walked, um, um, in April, um, in seventeen seventy-five, um, in battle for our independence. And come to find out, um, not all of those men are recognized at the current, um, Minutemen memorial that's at, um, up at Minutemen Park. So he's approached the trustees with, uh, a concept of how we might recognize them and I would envision that to come before the board, this board at some point. But the trustees have voted in support of that, um, uh, to create a, a new memorial. Let's take down the one that started there, but to recognize and, and really tell the story of, of, um, the hundred and one men that were, um, involved that very important day. Uh, finally, uh, actually two more things on the Community Preservation Act Exploratory Committee. I believe Alan will be coming before the board at our next meeting, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, yep, with, um, it's, um, sort of preliminary, I don't even wanna call it a recommendation, but looking, uh, to the, for the board's support of its sort of preliminary direction. So I look forward to that. And then, um, finally, I, I happen to be out on the website and I don't see, uh, the board's current goals and the town manager goals posted yet. Um, so if we can get that updated, that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Patrick.
Yeah, just a couple of things, uh, I guess quick update from, I attended my first Sustainability Committee, uh, meeting last week. Great conversation. The team has, has begun working through the transition of the cap, uh, with the Sustainability Committee. So there's a lot of work to be done there, as you can imagine, with all the work that was done in that document. So really good conversations to kind of look at how to whittle these things down to something that's more manageable and that we can go attack with some, some good, uh, uh, good team efforts. Um, and then I guess one other thing on the, on the, um, vaccination side. Uh, um, I attended the vaccination clinic with Alan and Christie, uh, two Fridays ago. Uh, just kudos to that whole team, very professional, it's great to see it. Great to see the various different representatives, uh, from our area, uh, attend that and, um, and support it. So, uh, great work there. I, I would just follow it up. I, I think I saw on the news today or yesterday that, um, I think the federal government or the CDC is now, uh, approved, uh, the Pfizer vaccine for down to twelve-year-olds, I think I heard. So Christie, I guess I'd be curious, um, if, if, if we're gonna get any update from the team in regards to additional trays of vaccines that they can expect to broaden out, uh, that? Uh, cause obviously there could be a, a larger volume of, of, um, of, of people who wanna take part. So that's it, thank you.
Sorry, just to, um, I was just pulling up that, um, document. So I know I didn't, I sent it to you last minute today, but, um, on the last page of the document, uh, the PowerPoint presentation from the Board of Health, um, they do talk a little bit about the, the twelve-plus. Um, they do expect to just do some distribution of that, so, but I'll continue to update you as I know more.
Great to hear, thank you.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll also point out for the, Patrick, do you, do you have anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
So, um, I will point out for the, um, publics benefit that if you have a twelve-to-fifteen-year-old who's not current, I mean, where DPH hasn't set up the mechanism for them to get vaccines, you can go to the Vax Finder and pre-register. And once, um, eh, eh, once they open it up to twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds, um, you'll get notifications of, um, eligibility and, um, and get notified that you can go in and start looking for a site. And it will also, that notice will also let you which sites have the Pfizer vaccine. So you can pre-register to get notified, you know, when it's, the system is set up and now, you know, accepting twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds. Um, a couple of things, um, eh, so I, I have, um, tran- transitioned, um, on my role from the EDC. Um, and, and Selectman Kyo is taking over and, um, I wanna sort of thank the members of the EDC and, and Zach for his coming on board and sort of going from zero to sixty in about eight seconds and being up full speed. Um, there's a lot of good activity happening, um, in our commercial industrial space as well as, um, in addition to the current grant program and consulting with the downtown, um, you know, district. There are, um, active, um, businesses looking to move into the downtown area. Um, the, the EDC awarded a grant, um, to, um, an eatery called The Coop, which currently has a location in Millbury. They're opening a second location on West Main Street in Westboro. They are wings and barbecue, um, and will be serving beverages with those as well in the space that was occupied by the subway. And so, um, I wanna point out for anyone who owns an eatery or restaurant or knows someone who does, this is now the third restaurant or, um, food business that has opened up in our town during the pandemic. That this is such a great place to have a restaurant or an eatery or a bakery, that even in a pandemic, it makes sense to open your business or, or expand to another location. So I'll put that as well. Um, from the, uh, Westboro Affordable Housing Trust, a quick update. Our, uh, COVID-19 Emergency Rental Assistance Program has been up and running. Um, we're getting a full update that'll be discussed in our meeting Thursday morning at nine AM. That Westboro TV, I believe, will be covering that for those who are interested. Um, the last update, um, was about a week ago from the administrators where we had, um, twelve households that had applied and were expected to receive, um, grants starting with their May first rent. We, there were another forty applications that had been requested and were in the process of being filled out and completed. And so that program is working. Um, at the same time, due to an influx of federal money, the state has launched a, an additional Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Um, we're gathering the information and we'll start to share it as soon as we have more details. Um, it is different than Raft in Irma in that rental assistance can be up to a year. Um, it also comes with, I believe, up to fifteen hundred dollars in utility, um, assistance. And there's a program in that, um, or a component of that program that allows landlords And there's a program in that, um, or a component of that program that allows landlords to apply directly for assistance. Um, where the landlord can apply for assistance, get payment directly and forgive back rent for the residents that they're getting paid for from the state. Um, and so as we can share that information, we will as well. Um, the state programs generally take longer to apply and get approved. Uh, the Raft program, for example, averages sixty days from application to approval. And so we're seeing that our Westboro program is helping, um, folks stay in their apartments um, during that time and that we're filling that, we're able to fill that gap for people who are on the edge. Um, they can make sure the rent is paid, that they're stable and, and then the, you know, the state programs with the higher dollar amounts and higher, um, you know, you know, greater longevity can step in and make up the difference. Um, so that is, um, happening as well. Um, I, uh, as far as correspondence, I've received a couple of correspondence about the railroad bridge. I, Ian's covered it already, so I, um, won't go, won't go into it. Um, the only other correspondence I've received and, um, I believe I've copied all of these out to the board, including my responses, a number of emails, uh, following up on our vote uh, for the letter welcoming the Mass General Brigham Project, um, into Westboro. Um, and so I provided, um, responses to those letters emphasizing that we're not involved in the determination of need. That's really the state and their process, but that, um, if the state determines, you know, looks at the determination of need and decides what services and how much of those services can be provided in Westboro, we certainly welcome that. Um, I have also pointed out, just because there is some misinformation, um, out there about Westboro, um, that this facility isn't just outpatient surgery. It includes primary care. It includes behavioral health. Both of which, um, if you've had to look for a new primary care physician in our area, you know, that can be challenging and, um, right now I'm, I'm told that, um, uh, teens and adults who are looking for counseling services can face waits of up to three or four months um, in this area to get in with a counselor. So those are much needed services. And the facility is accessible and will be accessible by public transportation, um, which many folks still may not be aware of that we have in Westboro, um, with the via WRTA service, um, which also recently expanded their territory. Um, and so those are, um, the two years of correspondence that I've received since our, since our last meeting. And that's it for me. Okay, Patrick?
Yeah, just a quick question on the determination of need. Any, yeah, I mean, what, what, how, any idea how long that process takes to get a, an answer back from the Department of Health?
I do not.
State agency, who knows, right?
Yeah, and it's, and it's a complicated process.
Sure it is, yeah.
Um, but there's, you know, it's cer, it's certainly caught, um, caught the attention. So, um, with that, um, I will, um, entertain a motion to move into executive session. Ian, do the copy move?
Did I, did I, did I miss it? Did, did we skip over Sean or Sean, were you all set? Okay, sorry. I didn't miss it. Sleep with the Leo, I apologize.
Thanks for checking.
Yeah. Um, I will make a motion. I move to enter into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. And under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real estate.
Okay, thank you. Sean Kio seconds. Um, any questions or discussions? Okay, roll call vote. Uh, Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Sean?
E O, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Patrick?
Well, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So we'll head into executive session. The chair, um, under Mass General Law, the chair determines that public discussion of the, uh, subject matters of executive session would be detrimental to the town's position in litigation and negoti, and or negotiation. Um, so we will hold it in executive session. We will not be returning to public session, um, after the executive session. And I, so I wanted to extend a thank you to Westboro TV for, um, once again, covering us and making us easily accessible um, on many platforms to the public in Westboro and also appreciate the fact that you are juggling many meetings this evening. So thank you very much.